All right, so we'll start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, March 6, 2023. Called the meeting in order at 5:33. And tonight, we're going to be going into a closed session. And I'm going to be reading this. City Administrator's Annual Review. Under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D-05 subdivision 3A, the city council has the authority to conduct a closed session for a review of any employee under our direct supervision. The only topic of the discussion in the closed session will be the performance review of City Administrator Matt Poteraski. The meeting will be taped and a recording kept for three years as required by Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As is required by state statute, a summary of the conclusions regarding the evaluation will be given at the next open session of the Chaska Council. All right, with that, I would like a motion and a second to go into closed session. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong to go into closed session discussion. Hearing not all, favor signified by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. All right, we will be going into closed session at 5:34. Performance review on City Administrator Matt Poteraski as authorized by the Minnesota Statutes Chapter 13D-05 subdivision 3A. I would need a motion and a second to go ahead and open the meeting and move forward. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong to open the meeting again. All right, now we go back to regular session. We are on air. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Now we'll move into the open session. Thank you for that. All right, we will start with at least we call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember McGraw.
Here.
Mayor Winchell.
Here.
All right, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Are you all right, or do you need to do something? You good?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. To the viewers at home, sorry, we had a closed session and ran over a little bit. It's much easier to keep it closed and to close it and redo it at the end of the meeting. So we will go ahead and move forward now with the regular meeting. So, oh, I did a roll call early, sorry, but that's done. All right, we'll move to item six, adopting the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve. Approve the agenda. Motion by Councilmember McGraw.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve the agenda. Discussion. Hearing not all, favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to seven, visitor presentation. Tonight, we have a Mr. Steve Albright with the Shakopee Medawakkan and Sioux community for proposal on an organics facility. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Steve Albright. I'm the tribal operations administrator for the Shakopee Medawakkan and Sioux community. And I've got our organics facility manager Alfried just with us and our project manager Dan Lannas with us is also here, so.
You need to come up.
We've got a brief presentation.
Sorry, we're a little discombobulated here with the closed session.
This is just a one-page information sheet. Well, we'll make this brief and then we'll answer any questions or focus on any areas. We're really here tonight just to introduce you to our project that's going to be south of here, just over a mile on what was formerly the Malkerson property. The Shakopee Medawakkan and Sioux community bought 330 acres from the Malkerson family in 2021. Brian Rock Products bought the rest of the property, which includes the Renaissance Festival, but we own the pieces that we're going to talk about tonight. And what we wanted to update you on is the project that we are currently going through the process of permitting on and environmental review on, make you aware of that project and also answer any questions or concerns that you might have with that project. So I'll go through quickly. Stop me if you, if there's something you want me to focus more on and certainly answer any questions. So what is the SMSC organics recycling facility? We currently operate a facility in the city of Shakopee. We collected that facility, leaves, grass clippings, branches, brush, trees. We also take in about 10,000 to 12,000 tons of food waste per year as part of that. And when we talk about food waste, that's kind of the new thing that's trying to be diverted from landfills because when these products go through landfills, the way that they break down, they emit a lot of volatile organics and so greenhouse gases. And so by taking them through these facilities, you can dramatically reduce that. Plus, at the same time, rather than fill a landfill up with that material, you can generate compost and mulches out of that material and reuse them. And so that's what we do in our facility.
What is the SMSC?
So that's the Shakopee Medawakkan and Sioux community. That's our abbreviation. Nobody likes to say, it's a mouthful to say, so we use SMSC as our acronym. Yep. So our current facility is one of only two large-scale facilities in the metropolitan Twin Cities Seven County metro area that actually takes that material in. The rest of the material goes to landfills currently. So that is a big deal. We present, or we have about 70,000 tons per year that we divert from landfills. Our new facility, when we get talking about it, about 172,000 tons per year when it's fully built out, about three times as much food waste, though, as part of that. And then why is this a big deal? The waste goals that the Twin Cities has to meet their long-term goals, which part of those is just having enough capacity in the existing landfills to meet the needs of the metropolitan area, but then also reusing these products that, they always talk about diversion. There's so many things we can divert from our waste streams that'll allow our landfills to last longer and that we can reuse. And so a big part of that is the food diversion and we are one of two facilities that do that type of work on a large scale. The new facility is proposed to be, if you're familiar with the little racetrack, training track, we would be south of that. The SMSC owns the land on both sides of 41 in that location. The Martin Marietta, formerly commercial asphalt plant, is actually a leased property on SMSC lands. And then we own the land to the south down to the Renfest property. We're proposing, there's an area that was mined out in the early 70s in that area. And so we're proposing to build the facility down in that mined-out area that was mined in the 70s. This area also, to the Dakota people, is a pretty sacred area. And so for them, an opportunity to buy back the land, try to utilize some of the property that's already been impacted and then preserve the areas that haven't is a big deal. The SMSC, their historic Tinta Atunway Village was just to the south of this property along with substantial burial areas. And there was a lot of migration between Inyan Cheaka, their summer village, and Tinta Atunway over the years in this area. And so it's a fairly historic area to the community. So it was a big deal to them, working with the Malkerson family, to be able to bring this back to the Dakota people. The site that we're proposing for the ORF facility in yellow, it's about 93 acres. The facility itself is about 60 acres is what the facility ends up being. The facility uses, different than our current facility, which I showed you, it had all kinds of rows of material. This facility uses two very key pieces of technology that are important as we look at the future of organics, one of which is aerated static pile system. And why that's important is when there are odor issues with the organics, it's from turning the material as you're trying to blend it and keep the biological processes going. This facility will utilize a system that allows us to pretty much leave the material untouched during its, that period when it can have odors by bringing air in and out of the material through these bins that have aerated nozzles in the concrete. And so this is a technology, it's not new. This is something that's been done on the West Coast, up and down, up to, up into Canada for many years. It's just coming to this area of the United States. And so that is significant because it does two things. It allows us to expedite those processes with anaerobic bacteria versus that aerobic bacteria, or the aerobic bacteria versus anaerobic. So good bacteria that aren't stinky versus those that cause odors allows us to speed up the processes so the times when there can be odors are much shorter. And then if you do have odors, it allows you to actually draw air from the outside into the material through a filtration system before it's let go versus the current compost facilities where they turn rows. There's no equipment at all. You turn it and it's exposed to the air. So that's why this facility, one of the things that's very important.
How long does that process take from?
From beginning to end? So our current facility, about 90 days roughly to go through that process. This facility will go through the same part of the process in about 30 days. So much faster time. And then it allows us some time to actually allow the material to cure so we get better compost, get a better mulch. But within 30 days, it's through that period where you could have odors versus 90 days at the current facility. So big, significant change. The other big thing that is a big catchphrase right now, or a big issue, is PFOS. And many wonder what, how do you get PFOS in an organics facility? The food waste streams that come in, food wrappers, waste things that come in are all, they use the PFOS chemicals to make them so that greases and fast food and things don't soak through wrappers. And so all of that gets into that waste stream. And what happens is it actually gets washed out of the waste by rainwater. And so we can't discharge that water because it can have PFOS in it. So this facility is actually going to be getting a federal grant that's picking up part of the cost to totally reuse all of that water that could have PFOS in it and reuse that as part of the process. So the PFOS part of the stormwater system will be a zero-discharge system, which is the first of its kind in Minnesota of that type, too. So trying to handle two big issues with this facility.
Real quick while we have this site photo up. So everything with the red outline was purchased?
Yes, correct, yep.
So the yellow highlight, is there a plan for the rest of the land or improvements right now? I mean, to be blatant, it looks a little dilapidated when you drive by.
Yep. So we right now, as soon as we get through our environmental process, are actually proposing to remove the buildings on the site with the exception of one or two that are in decent shape. We're going to remove all the buildings and clean the site up. That's one stage. The southern portion, just to the south, that area is part of the Queen's Lot for the Renfest. And we do have an agreement with them as, if they stay, to allow them to continue to use that core. It's an old quarry area for parking. The corrals and the areas between 41 and the property, we don't have a plan for that. We are plating that with Scott County. So there is an opportunity to develop that. So, but we are going to be cleaning up and removing this spring. You'll notice a lot of activity just cleaning up the property in that area because we agree with you. We're not wild about the old buildings and the dilapidated look. So we want to get buildings on both sides of the roads cleaned up. The area to the north of 41, the old farmstead, that is a significant historical area in that it has been relatively untouched. It's been farmed. But the bluff area or the hillside area and all of that is still pretty much the way that it would have been hundreds of years ago. And so the community is looking to protect that area and clean it up. And then you have Martin Marietta on the northern part, which is the asphalt plant.
Just a follow-on question. So you mentioned that you're plating some of those, some of those lots with Scott County.
Yes.
What's the vision for those lots you're plating?
So the area south of 41, we have to plat that. Right now, it's several parcels, so we're plating that as part of our county process. It'll be platted into two lots, the ORF lot and then one lot between the ORF and Highway 41. It'll be in some kind of industrial use. We haven't identified what that is yet. We originally were just looking to buy land for the ORF itself and we ended up buying a little bit more land than we thought. The area to the south, without sewer and water at this time, really the Renfest parking in that vacant quarry area, that's about what you're going to use it for at this time. There isn't really a use for that. So that's being planted as an outlot, actually. It won't be a lot. So we don't know yet what that use will be. I would guess it'll be some type of industrial use. One of the possibilities is we may look at some point having retail outlet where you can come and purchase mulch and things there in a much more user-friendly situation than our current facility. So that's a possibility.
So the light green, that is part of the old quarry, then?
Let's see, right in here?
No, the light, that.
This is the new ORF site. So that was a quarry back in the 70s. So sand was mined out of that area in the 70s. If you go there, it used to, it's the Trail of Terror property is what it's been for several years. But that was actually mined many years ago. Though the material that's left there is sand, but it's not a quality or gradation that you can make money from. So that's why it's left that way. And then the southern part, if you're familiar with Renfest, this is a, there's a parking area here, but then the area, it's a, that's an old quarry that was mined out in the 60s and 70s also. I'll show you a little bit better picture. Just a few more facts. The new facility would process at full buildout about 172,000 tons a year. 35,000 tons of food waste would be part of that. Again, just touching on some of the benefits of it, greenhouse gas emissions reduction is a big one. This one, this facility at full buildout, it's about 21,000 metric tons of carbon reduction per year. That's significant. I'll tell you, that's a significant amount of carbon reduction. And so that's a good thing for everybody in this area. And so we're excited about that also. Here, this is a little bit better picture of the facility itself just to let you see it. So again, you've got 41 right here. We've got the old racetrack area. You'd come in, we will be, we'll talk about the road improvements in a second here, but you would be coming in on the existing roadway. You'll see we've got this, the material actually comes into a covered facility and then it's tipped in that facility. And then it's mixed and then it's put into these bunker areas here, which have then, I'll show you some pictures of those. That's where it goes through this ASP or this aerated static pile process system. And that's where it begins its process. Once it's removed from those, it ends up in these curing rows right here. And the curing rows are not, there's no, there's no odors at that time. But the longer that you can allow mulch and that type of compost to sit, the higher quality it is for garden blends and for different soil mixtures. And so we allow it to cure in that area. And then what you're seeing in these other areas is the finished material piles that we use that we sell wholesale and some retail. You'll also see a substantial number of stormwater ponds. And then our wood waste and our yard waste materials are stored at this end of the site. And then we are preserving, we're not proposing any of the tree removal, that entire riverbank area. We want to preserve that area. So we're trying to build within that existing. If you, if you drive down there now that you're thinking about it, you'll see kind of a cleared area. That's the area that we want to build this facility in and maintain as much of the tree cover as we can. So you won't be able to see this facility from the river. And again, from a facility standpoint, we have a, we have a hoop building. We have some concrete bunkers, but it's all pretty flat. It's really pavement and an open space facility.
Our mayor already said this, but are residents going to be able to come and actually bring yard waste directly to this site?
Yep, they would be able to. We would be open for that. One thing that we're, we are, if you've been to our existing facility, we work with our neighboring cities to have these yard waste drop-off days in the springs and the fall. The problem with those is it's a lot of cars at one day. We probably wouldn't do that at this site just because of 41 and the issues on 41. But on a given weekday or weekend, anybody can bring their yard waste and drop it off there, yeah.
Is there a cost?
Yes, there is, there's.
It's a three-tiered cost, like a.
Come, so speak into the microphone.
So they can hear you on the.
It's a three-tiered cost for residents. A small pickup would be $10. A pickup and small trailer would be $15. And then a larger trailer would be $25. So it's three-tiered costs. So the most you pay is 25 bucks for a yard waste drop-off.
And then we do a lot of, a lot of where we get our wood waste is operating cities' facilities. And I believe we just, or we're going to be entering into a contract with the city of Chaska also. I think we were your low bidder on your yard waste for 2023. So that is something that we're excited about. And that's.
You guys just shook his head to me saying, yep.
So we're excited about that. And we partner with our neighboring communities. And we do pickups at there. And a lot of times, though, I think where it's headed in the future is you'd have free drop-off at certain locations and then we would operate the locations and pick the material up for the community, too. So we have different kind of structures with different, I mean, how many municipalities are we doing right now?
What's that?
How many municipalities?
Twelve.
So 12 to 15 cities, we currently operate their yard waste facilities and bring their yard waste to our facility. This is just a picture of what a facility similar to this looks like. You can see these bunkers right here and I'll zoom in on those. And this is kind of your typical, ours will be more of a hoop structure building that has a canvassed or a fabric top on it, but similar for tipping. And then these are the compost piles that they use. Just seeing the bottom of the, you can see the material here. And then there are air nozzles actually in the bed of this area where they blow air in and pull air through depending on the time. You're managing temperatures essentially and you're managing airflow for the back, for the good bacteria within there. It's a, it is composting, but it's very high-tech composting is what I would tell you. There's a lot of computer systems that are going to be utilized to control this process.
Is there a certain range in which people may smell this at all?
So our hope with this facility is that there wouldn't be any odor issues at all. There is always going to be odors with, so compost, if you've been to a regular compost facility, you're going to smell like a wood mulch smell kind of at that type of facility. We're not anticipating that because you're north and kind of west of it, the prevailing winds are, if there is ever any odor, it's going to be pushed in that direction. This facility, because of the odor control, we, so what we do is we actually are throughout the day, we're monitoring for any odors. If we have odors at this facility, we're able to actually activate the biofilters. At our existing facility, we are at the, at Mother Nature's whim, winds and everything. This facility, we can actually operate that. So our hope would be that you don't even know that we're there. That's, that's what our hope would be and that's the goal we're making with the investment we're making in this technology is to manage that. But again, if you're on site, as we've said, one of the things, I don't know if you're familiar with leaves and grass, that's the smell that honestly is the, the more the issue that we try to manage is leaves and grass because they can become, if they're not maintained properly, if you've ever turned over an area where you've got leaves and grass that have been covered up for a while, you get that kind of bitter sour. That's what we're trying to prevent and through management of this process. So again, our goal, your, the, our current facility is within about 400 feet of residential properties. This facility is 1,000 feet away just from the city of Chaska and a half a mile away from residences in the other direction. So we're trying to pick a location that we don't think we're going to have any odor issues at. So again, we have, we have a waste management or we have a demcon on one side of us and we've got the asphalt plant to the north of us. So we think it's probably, it's a good fit in that location. This is the aerated system, just to explain to you. We've got our static piles and we actually use a biofilter. It has good bacteria in it. And that's what helps remove the odors from the material if we have an odor issue, if we're out, when we're out testing. And we have what's called the nasal ranger. We joke about this, but that's actually a piece of equipment that is out that's testing constantly to monitor for potential odor issues. And if that happens, they turn on the biofilters and pull the air back through the filters. And that's how we manage that. And then jumping to Highway 41. So part of our project will be adding turn lanes and bypass lanes in both directions on Highway 41. At this location, right now, there's nothing there. You've just got the traffic lanes. One of the big concerns and things that we want to manage is we are preparing our plans so that if and when 41 is shut down this coming year, we can do the majority of.
Not if.
When, yeah. We can do the majority of our work on grading and the things that are going to take the longest during that closure. So that's something that we're targeting. Our work, again, is adding turn lanes and bypass lanes. So it's really widening of the road itself. And then in 2024, we would have some paving and some signal work at the railroad crossing, but that's work that can be done while traffic is operating. And so we want to do as much work as we can. If MINDOT, we're working with MINDOT right now to permit that work. We're working in conjunction with them to allow that to be done when the road is closed.
Do you think I'm going to not be afraid of losing a tire anymore at the railroad crossing?
We would hope so, yeah. So MINDOT is actually going to be widening and fixing that railroad crossing as part of the 41 project. So, and we will be putting, we will be paying for the new crossing signals that'll be up there. So it will be a much safer crossing at that point. And then with the bypass and turn lanes, we hope that'll be good for traffic in both directions and long-term be a much safer. Our, our project, actually, our property doesn't generate that much traffic, but it is just, anybody who's been down there is just not, number one, a safe place to have your employees coming in and out or your customers. And number two, it's just inconvenient the way that it's set up right now. And so we want to make, we want to fix that, so.
And so the, when is this supposed to take place? Is while the construction's happening?
So the road, we actually have two projects. So we have a separate road project that's going to be done. And what we're doing is we're matching it up with MINDOT and the 41 closure so that we can do as much work as we can, hopefully, with the permits in place while they have the road closed. And then next year, we have to get a permit from the railroad to do their, their signal work and they actually do the actual signal installation themselves. That won't happen until 2024. So when that happens, we'll do the additional paving work. We can do that under traffic. Anytime that we think we're going to have to inhibit traffic, we would look for off-hours or things like that. We have a lot of control over when that can occur, so.
But they're not actually putting signal lights, sir?
No, nope. Just a new crossing, just new crossing system, yeah.
Do you guys still envision this to be a back entrance into the Renaissance Festival?
So the Renaissance Festival, the property owners, we bought it from, the owners of the land the Renaissance Festival is on has an easement across the roadway. So they have an access easement. So this will, at least in the interim, still be utilized much the same way it is now for Renaissance Festival. Should help it a little bit if we have turn lanes and bypass lanes there, so.
Turn lanes would help.
Yep.
That's the lack of that is what backs everything up.
And we'll be working closely with your staff just to keep them up to speed. We want to make sure you know what's going on. And if you have questions or concerns, that you know who to talk to and we can get you information as soon as possible on those things, so.
And so when would the construction of the actual, the organics facility actually take place?
So we are currently in the environmental review process with the MPCA. We're concurrently working on our permits. There's three MPCA permits that we will have. A stormwater permit, a source-separated organics, essentially the organic material permit, and then an air permit. Those three things are ongoing. Once we get through the environmental review process, our, we've been working with the county to get our conditional use permit at, at a point where it will move forward then, as soon as that and the plat. So, we're guessing end of May, early June would be when we would start construction on our site with our improvements. The road work can be done, once the environmental review is done, we can sequence that at any time. It's not tied to this project. It's work within MINDOT's right of way and being permitted by MINDOT, so. Two separate projects, but because we own the property, we can't proceed with anything until that environmental review process happens with our organics facility.
And when do you expect to open it?
Uh, summer of twenty twenty-four.
Is your environmental assessment worksheet completed at this point?
It's done, it's out for public comment right now.
Okay. Where do you access that?
What was that?
What, how do you find that?
Um, so, if you go, you can actually go to our SMSC page to get it, right, Al? So, smsc.com, is it dot com? So, smsc.com, we have a page on the new project, it's there, and then we can also provide, I can provide the link to your staff, too.
Sure.
So, you have it, and maybe you want to put a link on your webpage if, if community, if, if residents or have questions about it or something, we can have it directed to our webpage. So, we've got a landing page that tells about the project, provides this information, and then provides links to, to the different things, so.
So, if we have concerns from residents or something we identify, who should we reach out to?
You can reach out to me, and we'll make sure that, that it gets answered, so.
Great. I can, excuse me, I can tell you, as, as staff met, you know, the two biggest things that, that we talked about was, I mean, first of all, these improvements at forty-one are going to be a good thing. But we did talk about just this timing issue to try to make sure that, you know, let, let, let's not have the road closed and then it closed again, you know, let's, let's try to coordinate these things together, and then the odor side of it. And I, I do know from having, you know, MMPA, we have our anaerobic digester down in La Sore. I mean, the technology that they're talking about here as far as controlling odors is not a lot different than some of the stuff that's being used down there, so I, I think it is technology that has been used.
So, what's like, what's, what was the, kind of the perimeter for the odors?
Well, our hope would be, we're on a ninety-acre site. Our hope would be that you wouldn't be smelling this off our site.
Right.
But we're, we're, right now, when we have odor issues on our current site, we're at people that are four to five hundred feet away. We don't have anybody, you're, Chaska's a mile away, just across the river, and then the nearest housing that we have is over the landfill down onto one sixty-nine, which I think is about a half a mile away. So, it's a pretty significant distance. We don't anticipate actually any odors being noticed in those areas because of the distance. And the other things that are between those houses, you've got, in that case, you've got a landfill between us and those houses, and a landfill that emits different odors itself, you know, so. The, the closed landfill, that is, not the, the Demcon landfill we don't have any issues with, but the closed Louisville one does emit.
Proximity to the river water contaminant?
So, um, yeah, let me, uh, let's jump back. So, you can see, uh, the, we've got Gifford Lake right there. So, we're not getting anywhere near that area, but every, all the stormwater on this facility will either be reused, or it'll be clean stormwater that's discharged. So, different than a lot of different facilities, we have a, we have an MPCA industrial stormwater permit to manage this facility. So, this facility is completely regulated by the MPCA.
Okay.
What happens to your other site?
We will close that site down eventually. So, our other site, if you're familiar with that area, we've got housing popping up, we've got houses as close as four hundred feet from it, and we've got housing for the community that's on the reservation, so there's community housing happening, and City of Shakopee housing closing in on that. And so, the existing facility, we have a prairie there, and we're actually going to be putting bison on that prairie over the next year, so. That's what will happen there, or next two years, so. That facility will operate until this one is up and running. We'll phase out. As I said, it takes about ninety days for material to go through that facility, and we'll probably sell all that material out of that facility before, before we move, we wouldn't want to move it, so.
So, where do all your organics come from?
So, so are you-
They're coming from the, the trash haulers?
So, we do get some trash haulers. Al, you want to talk about?
So, we have two different streams of organics that come in, just the yard waste and then the food waste. The food waste comes in, say ninety-five percent of it by haulers. It comes from manufacturers, pre-consumer, pre-consumed manufacturers, comes from restaurants, school districts, Shakopee Prairie Lake School District, Shakopee School District. There's several other ones, Burnsville, Eagan, those school districts come our way. You can mention restaurants, manufacturers, that's where most of it comes from. But predominantly, it's haulers that pick around, or else they pick up the food waste. The yard waste comes from, uh, Chaska municipalities, a lot of residential drop-off, but a lot of haulers bring in the, the yard waste as well.
Okay. Because you, you said there wasn't much traffic, but it seems like there's going to be a lot of truck traffic. So, it's kind of, just trying to understand that, you said there wouldn't be a lot of traffic.
The number of trucks per day really is not, in comparison to the mine or anything going on around there, it's pretty insignificant from that standpoint. If you look at what commercial asphalt's doing on that area, our trucks, Dan, do you recall what our peak traffic is?
It's in the hundred, which is very negative.
So, over a, over a day period, we have about a hundred vehicles coming on and off the site, so.
I just look at the expansion as we look forward with forty-one traffic. Are we going to start drawing now additional garbage trucks coming from the north, or organic waste trucks, now coming and just adding more traffic to what we've been trying to get reduced over the years? So, that's, that's where I have a concern. You say it's not many, but to do that many tons, that's a lot of trucks. And then, then you have to get, then the product has to leave, and so, somebody's trucking that somewhere. So, I just, I guess, I'm not real convinced that it's not a lot of traffic.
For the industrial uses that could be there, I would say this is probably at the lower end, unless you're doing like a storage facility or something of that nature. So, compared to a landfill where there might be twenty garbage trucks hauling municipal solid waste, there's a lot less organics waste, and we're talking seventy thousand tons a year right now of material. Though, the yard waste, and they're brought in in different vehicles and different times, too. But yes, there is going to be more traffic, there's no doubt about that, I think.
And how does, you, you talked about, the bulk of the material, where does that go? It's got to go out by bulk, right? You're not, you don't do any bagging, everything is-
No, we, we do bag some material and sell that, um, yep, we do.
But a majority of it's still got to go out bulk?
Yep. For pro- for different projects and stuff, it's hauled out, correct?
And that, that is for like landscaping mulpson?
Yeah, landscaping, road, so a lot of this is used, soil mixes for road projects, so restoration along, when they do a street reconstruction project, the shoulders boulevards, this is becoming the way that a lot of those areas are restored now, through that material, through that way, soil amendments. We bag compost and sell that also. So, there's a lot, it goes out in a lot, a variety of different ways. And then mulch, too. We, we generate, we make mulch at this property, too, so. Just regular hardwood mulch, and we do color mulch also.
So, you do color mulch also? Okay.
And we did provide to staff copies of our transfer, of our traffic volumes and such that would show, if you're interested in more information on that, what our impact is of what's going on there right now, so.
All right. All right, anyone else have questions?
No, I just would like the link to the-
Well, I'll eat-
Environmental suspect, because I'm, I'm just struggling to find any of his websites.
We'll, we'll get it sent to you tonight, so.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate your presentation and-
Thank you.
Giving us the heads up before it happens.
And again-
Especially once it's in another county, you know, sometimes you don't find out till after the fact.
Well, and if there's questions or more things, Nate and Elise have been working with us, and they know how to get ahold of us, and we want to, we want, we don't want you to have to go to an environmental page to review something. If you have a question or concern, we want you to be able to ask the question, and then we can provide a response and additional information.
Sounds great.
We don't want any unknowns, so.
Because I got an email from someone saying, hey, do you know this is happening? And I didn't. I talked to staff, and they said they had been working on it for quite a while, so. That was reassuring to know. Just biggest question has been about the odor.
Nope, definitely. We understand that, and so, that's one of those things that it takes, and we can talk about it all we want, it's going to take operations and showing. We can show people the success out west of the facilities and how they operate, but it's really about us operating it correctly and making sure we're managing things, and being sensitive to our neighbors and, and issues, and so. We have a good relationship with our other industrial partners, Demcon and BRP there. We feel like we can work together with them to make sure that we're managing impacts to the, the greater community in all methods, whether it be traffic, odors, anything of that nature, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on their visitor presentation? Nope, not seeing anyone. All right. There's nobody online, right? I'm going to take that as a no. All right, uh-
We just didn't want to hear Kevin's always come over.
Well, Kevin is not here.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was saying.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, add an entertaining motion to approve the previous meeting minutes, and that's from February twenty-seventh, I think, or whatever it may be, so. Anyone? Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve previous meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Move on to item eight, which is consent. Consent items are items that we need to approve, but not necessarily conversation, but any and all could be pulled off if necessary. With that, anyone have anything, comments or questions? If not, an entertaining motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, moves us to, uh, motion to authorize negotiation of contracts for architectural engineering services and construction management for a public safety facility. I was reading Public Works. All right.
All right. Mayor, Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is work that we, we've been doing in relation to a strategic plan goal that was set in our last strategic planning session, which is reinvesting back in our core assets, as we've talked about quite a bit over the last year to year and a half. We have some general fund facilities that are in pretty rough shape right now and, and haven't been able to really keep up with the, the needs we have in the community. And so, part of our building program was identifying the police and fire, municipal service buildings, city hall and our library as being buildings to focus on. And in December, as you guys adopted the budget, you adopted the first phase of, of that program, which will allow us to move forward and actually working on the first of these projects, which is the highest priority, which is our public safety facility. So, since that time, we have been out seeking proposals from architects. We did, we got a lot of proposals, which is great. We received ten proposals from architects that were reviewed. We did have sort of a two-tiered process that we used in actually reviewing these. So, we had a group of employees from our building maintenance, police and fire were involved in the process, as were the department directors in those departments to go through the initial round of interviews, which happened back in mid-January. And then, from there, then, they made recommendations for three firms to move forward with for a second round of interviews, and that's when I jumped into the, the fold at that point. And since that time, we've been really just working to, to narrow that down. I got to say, I learned more in the last, like, month and a half about fire stations and police stations than probably I was anticipating, and I think, I think you guys could all probably say the same thing, too, which was great. I mean, I thought that the, the process, I think we started to really understand as we went from facility to facility, what were the most important things to, to focus on. And quite frankly, that's how we came to CNH as a recommendation for the architectural firms. There was a lot of great architectural firms who I think would all do a, a really good job. But one of the things, to me, that really stood out about CNH, even though they've had maybe a little bit more experience on the fireside, it's not that they haven't had experience on the police side, but they're a different type of firm as far as they're principally driven one, which the people that we see sitting with us right now are the people that are going to, we're going to see a lot of over the, the next twelve months, and speaking with other cities about the process and how it works, we think it's going to be a really good fit for how we move forward and actually get this, this project developed. So, a couple of things, we will have CNH come up and just introduce themselves and go through a quick presentation. Just from a, a process perspective, so if the council moves forward and authorizes us to enter into negotiation for a contract with CNH, but also our construction management firm at RGM, we'd be doing that, but then simultaneously starting this process for design. Because right now, the, the goal is to have the building start under construction in the spring of next year, and then be completed in the fall of twenty twenty-five. And that seems like that's a long ways out from now, but there's a lot of things that we have to do between now and then, including going through our own planning process, which-
They're the hardest.
Oh, they're the worst. So, yeah.
That's, I'm serious, that's, when we built those fire stations where I was, they were the hardest people to work with. It was like, oh my god. Especially community development, where are they?
Yeah, there, yeah. He's not, he's hiding. He's not here. But it's, it, there's a lot to get to that point, and, I mean, one of the things that really stood out to me that CNH talked about was forty design meetings, really, over about the next three, four months. I mean, that's, that's a lot of meetings. Yeah, so, there's a lot of work to do, but it's, it's all really important stuff, and, and everybody's really looking forward to it. So, that's sort of the, the timeline to expect. I wanted to give a huge thank you to the members of the fire department, police department, building maintenance department. Elise has done a ton of work. That group back there, including Chris, sitting back in the, in the back, have all been part of this process, and just, it, it's been really great to have a team to be able to listen to about the pros and the cons of looking at different firms, so a big thank you to them. You can see what the fee proposal for CNH was at about, just a little over two million dollars to, to get us through the entire project. That's within of the, of the proposals that we saw, and especially the top proposals that we saw that we were considering, that's within five percent of what we saw. So, on a project that large, we felt really comfortable with where they came in, in it as a price. So, with that being said, I'll invite Quinn and Brooke are, are the, the two partners that are going to be leading this project, and have them talk a little bit about themselves and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Quinn Hudson, a principal of CNH Architects. Also with me tonight is Brooke Jacobson, another principal. And we'll each pick a piece of this to give you a little background on who we are and, you know, what steps are coming up in this process. So, first of all, as, as City Administrator mentioned, we are a principal-led firm. We're a smaller firm. We've been, so in the mid-size range in architectural firms. We're not, had, we don't have offices around the country, or even, you know, multiple offices around the city. We're, you know, again, mid-size firm, and with that, we lead projects all the way through. And that's something we feel that's really important for our approach to a project, you know, rather than passing on the project after early design to somebody else, either for construction documents or construction administration. We feel it's important that the people that were with the team, with the city through the early parts, follow it all the way through, so you maintain that level of experience throughout. Excuse me. We're an established firm. We were founded in nineteen sixty-nine, so we've been around for quite a while, and we really focus a lot on public safety projects. Over half of our work is in the municipal category throughout that, so. Some examples of our, our past experience, we are currently working on a new police station for Midota Heights, addition remodel to the city of Burnsville for police. We've worked in the past on other police stations, as well as worked for law enforcement centers at county level, and we've done two projects for remodeling at Minnesota correctional facilities, one at Stillwater and one at Oak Park Heights. So, that experience in the police side, in fireside, we also have extensive experience. Projects that are currently under construction include fire stations at, two at Plymouth, one at Coon Rapids, one in Bloomington, and one that's just starting in Apple Valley. In addition to that, we are just very pleased and proud to mention that we won a gold medal for national fire station design, with the Burnsville Fire Station number one being the top in the country last year through Station Design Magazine. So, a broad variety of experience in the public safety realm. With that, Brooke, you want to talk a little bit about the process?
Yeah, so, we'll, for our process, we'll start off with a kickoff meeting, where, where we will define project goals, talk about process as a whole there with the entire team. From there, we'll begin to gather background information, so existing drawings, surveys. We'll walk through the existing facilities, hear about what, what's working, what's not working, likes and dislikes. We'll review all city ordinances so that we're prepared as we move forward to assess the site. And then, from there, we'll look at touring other city facilities for both police and fire, and see lots of different examples. Again, talk about things we like and don't like that we see on, on those tours. Then, from the tours, we'll start working on developing a program of space needs for the project, where we really talk about what are all the needs, you know, talk about those goals, what are the needs, and start assigning square footages for the needs. And then, from there, we'll move into schematic design, where we really take the program of space needs, we take all those square footages, and we turn those into concept diagrams. From there, concept diagrams will go into floor plans. As we transition from schematic design into design development, we really start looking at the finer details of things, what things start to look like, and then, as we're wrapping up all those details and all those meetings that were mentioned, we, we shift into construction documents, where we fully detail out the project to get it ready to go up to bid. And, and that's where kind of our process ends with the, with the bidding, and then construction starts after that.
So, as Brooke mentioned, we spent a lot of time on gathering information, programming goals, and with that, one of the strengths that we really focus on is relationships and designing facilities specific to the clients that we're working with. It's really important to us that, what, the end result comes out of the team that's put together, and, and what's important for Chaska may be something different than other cities, and different methods, flows, things like that. So, we'll, it's very much a part of our process to really develop that understanding relationship so that the end result is one that really represents your city. With that, I just left, again, say that we're very excited to be here tonight and look forward to working together and, on the project. If you have any questions, let us know.
Questions? You said you're a pretty small firm. You've got a lot of stuff going. Is, are we overextending?
Yeah. We're, we're small compared to some of the really large firms. We are mid-sized, and, and yes, we're prepared for this project.
Okay. Because it- Okay, cause it just sounds like you got a lot of things going. But the good thing is, is that, that I heard that we'll see you guys, cause what happens a lot of times is somebody completely different shows up and not with the same message that was initially delivered, so.
And there is a big team behind the two of us that are working on it.
No, I'm sure of that, but I just, that was, that's a lot of projects.
Yes.
And they're all, I mean, the good thing, they're all local, so you can get from one job to the next. What about community engagement? Do you do the community engagement piece?
Very regularly, we work with the clients to develop community engagement processes.
I haven't had a conversation with Matt how we're gonna go about doing that, but we're gonna have to reach out to the neighbors in that area, what's happening.
And that can vary a lot, from open houses to mailings to just being at events that the community's at. Other places, we have posters up with images and feedback, it can be a lot of varieties, something we work together to decide what's best for your process.
To me, it's gonna be even more than just the neighbors around. It's also gonna be, one of the things that's gonna make this facility unique to what, something we just don't have now is, you know, there'll be the, the police station, the fire station where they do their operations on day-to-day basis, but there's, there's gonna be things that are more open to the public. And so, you know, what are the things that we wanna do as, you know, public safety departments to be able to better connect with our residents, to be able to, you know, we don't have to probably move the police academy around to, you know, a million different places, whatever's open, you know, designing the space to be able to connect with the community on a real deliberate basis in there. And, you know, what are the things that are gonna be important to the community as a whole?
Yeah, I just kinda just, I always Google, check out webpages, look at your projects, great-looking buildings, and yeah, I mean, just kind of fun to see what things look like when they're done. And I didn't realize how busy the other season it would be for a number of fire stations. A lot of coming soon, like I suppose, you know, you build them and then they all kinda age out at the same time, too.
Yeah. What's, what's, are you willing to throw out, what, what is the cost per square foot now on a commercial building?
Yeah, for a fire station, an all-new fire station, which is not exactly what you're looking at, or a police facility's a little bit lower, but a fire station comes in around 400, 410 dollars a square foot, something like that, you know, police will be 350. Again, it just depends on what's all involved.
Right.
And of course, with some remodel, that can bring some prices down a little bit, too.
So it seems this one's working on the existing building, you know, and obviously with fire departments, you know, gotta continue operating. Who's leading the, you know, the coordination for, you know, making sure that we can still operate while the, you know, the construction's happening?
That'll be part of the design process, that we'll work together with the construction manager and the departments to figure out the phasing of the project to allow operations to continue throughout the entire process.
That was actually a big question for, especially the fire department. And I mean, the police department's in a good situation where, you know, they'll be able to get that section done while they still operate out of this facility, but the fire station's different. They're gonna have to remain operational, and so it's gonna take, you know, looking at how we phase that building so that, so that we keep operations constant. And that's one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking to other cities about, like, I think Plymouth was one of them that had the, had the existing fire station that they needed to keep operational as they moved forward. And that was sort of an amazing one because that one, you could barely even tell that that was a old station. I mean, you looked at it when it was done and it, it looked like a new station, but they kept it operational the entire time that, that it was under construction. So that's, that's gonna be a big deal for fire.
All right, anyone else?
No, I was just gonna say it looks exciting. I think there's, looking at your work, it's been, I was happy to see things that were really intentional, like the Midota Heights Fire Department displaying the old fire trucks. And we obviously have those, a lot of intentional design that's meaningful, and I think that really stood out, and I'm excited about this, so.
All right, I guess that's it. All right, well, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Yeah, do you guys got any comments? No?
We promised Brian that as part of this whole process, that we're gonna pay just as much attention to how we maintain the buildings as how we build buildings.
What, you have to maintain buildings? Is that a new concept?
Yeah.
Heck, then what will you do? All right, with that, anyone else got any comments or questions for staff or directors here? Hold on, I would entertain a motion, one way or another.
I'll move to authorize negotiation of contracts for architectural engineering services, construction management services for the public safety facility.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember One.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Gra. Again, this is authorizing the negotiation of contracts for architectural and engineering services for public safety buildings, so. All right, discussion. I think we hit it. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Just so you know, this will move quick, cause we already have our, like, our organizational meeting this Friday, so it's, it's gonna happen quick.
Exciting, let's do it.
I already got word out in the street that you guys got it, I already got a phone call. It was like Sunday and I'm going, I'm just reading the packet.
Congrats.
Mike Scott, you know Mike. He called me, oh, I heard you got CNH. Said, well, we don't yet, but he's leaning that way, so. All right, thank you guys.
Thanks.
You guys got anything? You just came to listen? No speaky?
I was gonna say, you're not, you're not gonna approach and gush of your level of excitement towards this? The ball is rolling.
Come on, Cole, you got it.
Well, it's great talking to you.
Thanks for all the great work. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Something everybody here, everybody here is very familiar. I'm new.
Are you, were you looking for something? Cause we're gonna go into a closed session, so I would have to, I would have to ask you to leave at that point, but otherwise, you're welcome to stay to the end, most council meetings, but.
I'm.
Why don't you come on up to the microphone?
Yeah. I'm both new and not to Chaska, I've lived here for the past 10, 12 years. I'm thinking about six months ago, I moved out to Adina, moved back here, but I just wanted to sit in and participate in my local government a little bit, so.
Oh, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Just unfortunately, we have a closed session due to a lawsuit.
I'll leave you guys to it. You guys have a wonderful day.
If, if you ever have any questions, though, don't hesitate to contact either the city administrators, myself, or the assistant city administrator. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Appreciate it.
And you can join via Zoom, too, which is always great, if you just wanna listen to.
Yeah, I noticed that earlier on.
We always have Zoom available.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was nice, thank you.
All right, so we, I gotta find my.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll put you to work if you stay here much longer. All right, so we were gonna be, we are going into another closed session regarding Mueller Systems. The city council will now enter into a closed meeting to discuss agenda item 11 as authorized by the Minnesota statutes, chapter 13D dash 05 subdivision 3B. The discussion will be conducted with the city attorney and will relate to matters that are subject to the attorney-client privileges regarding threatened litigation between the city and Mueller Systems LLC. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into a closed session. Second, or motion to go into a closed session. Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We are going to a closed session at 8:06.
Thank you.
All right, we are back, folks. So I get back online here. So we are at, at this point, we are at Council's Payables. So anyone got a question on bills?
I have two questions. Page seven, there's one for code row equipment for Cardinal Street something.
Yep, so this is actually, it's a pressure reducing valve for the Cardinal Street area. So one of the things that we have to do is, as we get, as we come down the hill, we have to actually reduce pressure of our water, otherwise it'd be like goonies.
That's a good way to describe it. Okay.
Where was that done at? Have they already put it in?
Yeah, up in one of the streets, up in Cardinal area.
And then the other one is on page 11, there was a Schmeizer Engineering Laboratories, or Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories, there's a few items for Bluff Creek, and it's like the Bluff Creek and something, Minnesota, whatever, so it says that, yeah, so I'm guessing these are substation pieces, but the question was is that whether they're being purchased, or yes, are these being, are these like, assuming they're substation parts and components, not services.
Yeah, so what they are is they're remote terminal units, so they're allow, they allow the, the substations to be done remotely, which has become a code change that needs to, need to occur. But this is one that, like on the Minnesota River Substation at RTU, will actually get reimbursed from MMPA for that.
Oh, gotcha. So, these are all getting paid for by, from MMPA?
Yep.
Okay, great, that's all I got, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember one?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, to pay the bills, discussion. Hearing none, release, we call roll.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Grau?
Aye.
Mary Ann Shuttle?
Yes. All right, moves to other business, Councilmember Hatfield.
I don't think I have anything this week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard?
Just a couple of road construction, upcoming open houses. There's one planned for this Thursday for the Highway 41 project, that's at the event center, and I believe it's from five to seven. I just got a postcard in the mail, there's one, Carver County's hosting one for the Highway 41-10 project, it's a public meeting, it's Thursday, it's March 23rd, and it's from four to seven PM. It's at the Chaska Community Center and the Brick City Banquet Room. And then I saw on Facebook that there was one for the Highway 41 MINDOT one for resurfacing project. I was like, wow, there's so many! And that one is on Wed- Wednesday, March 8th, so that would be this week here, from 4:30 to 6:30 at Chaska Middle School East, to learn more about the Highway 41.
They don't tell you what room, though, that's interesting.
It is interesting.
I love that, too.
So, so there's, you know, three different, 'tis the season, road construction projects, open houses, just wanted to mention all of those. Wanted to, so wanted to welcome Officer Fernando Rodriguez, went to his swearing-in ceremony last week, so it's really nice to see new officer joining the, the team. And I think that's it. I know I have something that I thought of, and I can't remember.
You'll have a last call.
Oh, whatever, okay.
Councilmember Wong?
I got a few things, so also welcome to Officer Rodriguez, who was joined, of course, he's actually been around for a little while, finished his official train, or training, or onboarding time. Yep. And so one, one, I have one question that's on here, is like, how are things progressing with Costco? You know, I know that, because one of the things that, you know, people, I've heard from a few people, has been, well, you know, with the snow and stuff, you know, does that still keep it on track? Or is it delay it? Or do we know even how much it would delay it?
Yeah, it, that shouldn't affect where they're going to, the continental side of it, they're actually moving forward, they're already doing like their community building and stuff, so, you know, things have gone forward there. The Costco has indicated that they'll be looking to pull their permit during the summer for the actual building. You know, the big driving thing for them, getting open is going to be the, is going to be getting the roundabout completed. And now with MINDOT moving forward with this re, what do you call it, resurfacing project in the springtime, that's when they're looking at doing the, the actual roundabout, too. So we had thought that that was going to get pushed out a little bit further into summer, but it looks like that's going to be.
They're going to do it during school?
Yeah, they'll be starting up.
They, they've removed trees already.
Yeah. So, the, the ultimate opening is next spring, when they'd open up their doors.
Yeah, because I had that down here to know if we talked about Costco, that changed, because I've been telling everybody, summer, or fall of.
That's, they were originally going for the, the fall, and I think it became clear as they were looking at the development stuff moving forward, it wasn't necessarily the snow, they knew before that, that it, that was just too aggressive of a timeframe.
But we, we as a city, we're on track with them. It's nothing we're doing.
No, in fact, we, the roundabout is not our project, that's the developer's project, so it's actually their contractor that's doing it.
Is that going to be you, Pennabek?
No, it's.
Pratt alone?
Pratt alone, yep.
Let's see, Human Rights Commission has the Women's History Month nominations for, for nominating women in our community who make our community special, so Human Rights Commission would like to profile them, so if you know of a woman in our community who's like served, either like works in our community, or lives in our community, who is like really helps to make our community special, certainly, you know, go ahead and nominate, you can find the link for the nomination forum on, on Facebook, as well as the Human Rights Commission's website or webpage. And also I got the recap from the Chaska Hawks for this past month, for activities, the one act, the one act play Alice in Wonderland was the runner-up in the Section 2A Championships, which is pretty cool, for the drama. The Knowledge Bowl team, purple, qualified, and will compete in the state tournament in April. And the arts orchestra earns a superior rating at the regional 2A competition. We have two students sign national letters of intent to continue their careers in college, two seniors are in AAA's for our section honors with a 3.0 or higher grade point average in league athletics. Dance team has earned 11 out of, sorry, earned, earned in the West Metro Conference Championship for the 11 out of the past 12 seasons, and they've also qualified and competed at state in both high kick and jazz funk. Junior competes at, one of the juniors competes at the state Alpine Ski Tournament. Girls basketball team is in the Metro West Championship for the fourth year in a row, and we have a freshman who qualifies and will compete at the state wrestling tournament, and another junior who will compete at the state swim and dive tournament, so lots of good things happening at the high school. And then the last thing I have is a question, and one of the things that's been on, that's a piece of legislation that's currently going up for committee, committee hearing, is H. House Bill HF2235, which is about housing finance, going up to the Housing Finance and Transportation, or Finance and Policy Committee, which is about the Legalize Affordable Housing Act. And there's some concerns about that. And there's some concerns about that, that, that were in the bill that seem to have restrictions on what we can do as a city, the way we can zone things, what our obligations are, our collection of fees, things like that. And so I was wondering if, you know, could talk a little bit more about like how that may impact us, if there's something that we could do from a, as a community, from a community perspective to, you know, let, at least let our electeds at the state understand what our position is.
I'm going to turn it over to Elise, who can sort of summarize. I know Nate put together sort of a memo in here to, to talk about it. But Elise, if you want, I may just summarize what are the big items in there, and then we can talk about what might be a good next step.
Yeah, so as, as Matt mentioned, I would refer to Nate's particular memo where he outlines kind of the things that are, you know, the, the League of Minnesota Cities put together a larger outline of, of concerns about this bill, but Nate really narrowed it down to kind of things here in Chaska, we should be, you know, interested in paying attention to as far as this bill is concerned. So, you know, the first part is the impact fees. And so while there are some good things happening with that about, you know, clarifying language about when cities can collect these impact fees, there is concern about the time limits into how long it can take to spend those fees that are collected. And if we don't spend it in a timely manner, then those fees potentially go back to the developer that they came from.
And the reason that's a big deal is, think about Southwest Chaska. So we collect impact, impact fees for sewer lines that, or water lines that we know we need to like create a loop in our water system, but maybe that doesn't need to be done with this portion of the development now, but it needs to be done overall, over time. So we collect those fees, we keep them, and then when we need to build it, we build it. This would say, well, if you don't build it right now, you have to give the money back. And it's like, well, that doesn't necessarily work out, because like, we might need to put a water tower in a certain location, and we can't get to that location until we actually have the development actually move to that. So, you know, the. Yeah, I, I don't quite get the idea, but I mean, if you're paying the impact fee, it's like, you know, do you want it built wrong or right? You know, so it's, it's basically putting limits on how long we can actually hold those dollars. But that, you know, in Southwest Chaska, I mean, you could have a spread of eight to 10 years between when you actually build the first part of the infrastructure, and when you have to build out the last part of the infrastructure and that development.
And I think some of the concern comes, too, is that most of the time the developers pass these impact fees along to the, the home buyers. And so, you know, they're essentially reimbursing themselves by doing that. And then if we give the money back to them, who technically kind of comes out ahead then? So I think there's.
So the homeowner still had to pay, they're not getting the money back, it's the developer getting the money back.
Man, I heard a presentation that the effect would be that cities just couldn't allow development until there was a big chunk ready to develop that could support the water tower.
Yeah.
So in effect, what you'd get is you'd get denials, 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 until everybody was ready to go.
It's kind of back to the old days, where you go in and develop, you know, 200 homes at one time, and nobody does that now. Now they're doing 50, 50 home blocks at a time.
And one of the reasons that we got away from that back in the recession was because cities put in all this infrastructure.
And sat on it.
And sat on it, and then the recession happened, and they still had to pay the debt service on it, but there was, there was nobody to pay the impact fees on it. So we actually spent years trying to get away from that system, and now this would force us back into it.
Into a modified version of it.
Yeah.
Some sort of.
And I'm not, we've been kind of, as the mayor, the mayor, the local mayors have been talking about this bill for quite some time. This has been around for four years at least, if not longer. And we've even had one of the head authitors, who is now one of our representatives. And we still can't figure out the reasoning for doing this. How it's, I don't see that it's really going to create affordability or affordable housing. And I don't know, for the longest time it hadn't gotten anywhere, but now all of a sudden it's got a hearing, so that makes it scary. And lots of new people in the different legislation groups, that you just don't know if they might get, because that building organization is a strong lobby group. They're very, very strong and very organized, so. Sorry, Elise, I cut you off.
That's, that's quite all right. I, I think the other kind of piece I would focus on is, is Article Four in Nate's memo. And that, that talks about, you know, some of the, what they're looking at in particular, residential development. So by right, you could have townhomes or duplexes, excuse me, duplexes in a single-family neighborhood. That would be allowed by right under this particular bill. Additionally, it would limit our ability to use plan unit developments. And as you know, we use PUDs quite a lot here. So that would severely limit our ability to be able to, you know, put that into practice as we do now. And as, you know, Nate mentioned, this is, this is something that allows us to maybe get more density and get more affordability, that sort of thing. So we see it as a detriment. And then just about the building aesthetics and what we would be allowed to require and look at as part of it. So Mayor, as you mentioned, it, it does have a hearing tomorrow at 3:00 PM in the House. There is, at this point in time, no Senate companion bill, but we're watching and taking notes. So really, this was just to kind of get you up to date on what's happening and make you aware, so if something else does come forward.
And I don't think, what we're hearing now is, we don't think that this is going to pass this year. Because there isn't anybody in the Senate that's sort of jumping up saying, yeah, I want to support this. But things can change in future years. And so I think what we would suggest as staff is if, I mean, it concerns us. And if it's something that, that you guys look and say, yeah, this really concerns us because, you know, we've used PUDs, you know, to try to make neighborhoods be the, the way we want to, and not just a, whatever they can be. Or we've done it to, to be able to require affordability, or we've done, you know, or we've done anti-monotony to make sure that all of our houses don't look the same. You know, we've done all these things to, to, from a planning perspective, to, to help improve the look of our community, and also create more affordability and all these things. And the intent of this is, you know, getting at trying to say that, well, we're trying to create more affordability by taking away all these rules. Well, these are the very things that we've used as tools to, to do that. And the fees are a real issue, because if development doesn't pay for development, then it's people who are already living in town that are going to have to pay for development. And they already paid for development when they bought their house. And so our suggestion would be, is that if, if it's something that you guys feel, yeah, this is concerning to us, that we actually draft up letters to our, our representatives and Senator to, you know, basically outline what our concerns of this are, so it becomes something that we can use as more of an educational tool as we move, you know, through this session, but even into next session, that's something we can refer back to, to say, hey, you know, we talked about this before, these issues haven't changed.
I think it would be really a strong, you know, at least to, as an educational piece, because I think that, you know, a lot of these pieces of legislation, they take like multiple sessions to get anywhere. And this seems like it's starting to get a little bit of traction. I think that, you know, our, our concerns and their real practical impacts to us need to be known, because, you know, it affects at the very core the way that we happen to, you know, to zone, to plan, to collect fees, to operate in a practical way. So I, you know, I strongly believe that now is the time to get out in front of this, because before it picks up a lot of momentum, especially when there's a lot of new people, you know, up at the Capitol, to at least, you know, get that information out there. No, there's real concerns from communities that, about like how this is going to work, because, you know, that's not the way things, you know, the, the way that I think there's a perception of the way things are done today, and it's not necessarily accurate. I think the legislation's written around, at least, maybe, it may be inaccurate, or maybe a different, some other communities do things a different way, but unfortunately it impacts us pretty, in some pretty significant ways.
So I've heard from Councilmember Wong, does the rest feel the same, that we should be drafting letters for our legislative group?
I would say so, based on the information we've been presented with.
I was going to ask what you want, you know, what, you know, because I saw a call to action from the League of Minnesota Cities. But I didn't know, like, is this an individualized thing? But it sounds stronger coming from the council as a whole.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be strong coming from the councils as a whole. And I think it becomes one of those things that if you're ever with our legislators, you know, and they say, what's going on? This becomes one that you can say, well, we just sent you a letter on this, and, and, you know, this is a concern of ours.
Thing we definitely need to, I, I'm in favor of sending them all one. And, and I saw you had the opportunity to send something to Representative Ream about maybe getting together?
Yeah.
Is that talking about that?
No, that's talking about City Square West.
Okay. But that'll give us an opportunity to do that. But I, I think we need to send one to our counterpart in Maconia, for sure. Because he is a big proponent of it. So I'm in favor that we do it.
Okay, we'll put something together. I guess question would be is, do you want us to bring it back to have it approved? Or do you just want us to put together, send it out? If you guys feel comfortable, we just send it out from the mayor.
I think send it out myself. I don't know how the rest do you feel.
I think it's pretty well.
Otherwise, it's two weeks, you know, you gotta wait again.
I think it's pretty well outlined, I know what the concerns are. And, you know, I would say, I would be hesitant if I didn't have that information, because I, you know, were concerned, but I, you know, I trust that our concerns reflect what we just saw.
So we're okay doing it? Okay.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do it, and just, when you get them ready, and we'll send them out.
We didn't, we didn't get it up before the hearing, but, well, it's.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be an issue this year, because again, I don't think this is going to pass this year.
Other than not a senate, we're okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's going to pass this year, but it, it's, it's been talked about long enough where it's.
Every year it's getting a little more momentum, unless somebody.
Any precedent to other places where it's been acted? I mean, like, I'm guessing someone just crafted randomly, so I'm guessing somewhere in some.
Yeah, not, not that, not that I've heard, but no.
Because that's our thing, too, it's like, you know, you, like, you don't have any established to see how it actually works. You have a lot of theory of how you think, you know, it gets written, and think like, well, this will work. But you can't point to like, yeah, we did this, and this thing over here, and here was the outcome.
I, I wonder if like, you know, Representative Elkins, I think is a Cal One, so I wonder if he pulled it from someplace in Northern California, but just, you know, guessing. So, I don't know.
Well, Elkins is in Bloomington, and I just don't.
Yeah.
I don't know, he's, he's been the main author of that bill since it's been floating around, so. You know, I hear is, is the Elkins bill, you know, and it doesn't even have it, so.
Yeah, don't know.
Probably better than the real name, which seems somewhat deceptive.
Yeah, I, I completely concur, is that you read the bill, and you're just like, well, this seems like a good thing. And, and then you look at the details, and you're like, well, I'm not quite getting.
Well, that's the whole thing, it's so confusing, I don't think anybody really knows. The importance of the bill name.
Yeah. Sort of like the title of the newspaper.
Yep.
So one of the things that was nice about like Nate's memo, and I think this is something that goes as part of that letter, is that, you know, is, is to emphasize that, you know, we're, we're not against affordability, we're verminish to support of affordability and having a good mix of housing types, but this bill doesn't seem to accomplish that the way our world works.
Well, it, what it does, what I felt it's done from the builder's perspective is, and you, you've seen some articles in the Star Tribune about this, that they're trying to say that the reason homes aren't affordable is because of cities, which is just ludicrous. Because our costs in these things are, are just a fraction of what the total cost, I mean, we're, I mean, there, these builders are paying astronomical amounts of money for land, which is driving the, is absolutely driving the cost of housing. And so to, to me, you know, it's just like, you know, they all want to be in the game, and so they all just go out and they just start paying whatever for this land, and.
Lock the land, because there's not much left.
Yes. And, and that's what's driving the, the, the cost of, of housing to, to be unaffordable. Our, ours is more of a equity thing. It's, how do you, how do you not charge new people in the community for services that they're going to receive, when everybody else in the community's already paid for it? You know, it's, it's, there's a cost to providing these services and expanding roads and expanding sewer and water and all that. You know, you, you can't, you can't push that cost on everybody else and not expect that they're contributing towards their community.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Grau?
Just two things. One, just a reminder of how fortunate I live in a city at Chaska that does things that I don't hear, maybe other communities do, but like I said, I was sharing with some outside that I got a nice little reminder, a nice little courtesy notice on my door that I might have a water leak. And, I think it's, well, my self-diagnosis, I think it's a water softener issue, there's no, water's not flowing outside in my house or anything like that. So just kind of like, oh, that's, I mean, you just wonder how long you would have not known that, and, and to have someone come by and, you know, it wasn't an eviction, though, that's just good, you never know when you get something stuck to your door, right? But just a nice little notice and the data, and you're kind of like, oh, so then you get curious and kind of look. So just, you know, one of those good things to feel about living in the city of Chaska. Second thing, just to be selfish and self-serving, because I get opportunities sometimes to do that, and a little bit off the, of the Hawk pride note, I will note that Chaska Basketball Association's traveling leagues have wrapping up. Girls had their state tournaments, grades three through eight, last weekend, and then this weekend, boys, three through six, and then next week it's seven through eight. So lots of good stuff happening, a lot of collection of state tournament. I'm selfishly proud to say that my son's team, who I've coached with two other great coaches, who is a C team, but we made their top tier of C teams. We actually took runner-up last, this weekend, which, to be honest, is pretty incredible. Largely, you know, a couple of reasons I think it's incredible. One, coaching was definitely holding them back, truthfully. But I mean, you look at some of the cities, so for fourth grade, I don't know all the data for all the other grades, but for fourth grade, we had three teams, A, B, and C, and we had 28 kids come out, which actually is not that many, so you had eight, 10, and 10. We had no cuts. So everyone actually who tried out made the team, which in the fourth grade makes a lot of sense, right? It's fourth graders, still learning to have fun. You know, we're up against communities, even in that C league, who I talked to, a coach in St. Michaelville, they cut 36 kids. Nataka's cutting 40 kids, Osseo Maple Grove's cutting 40 kids. Now, they go, cut sounds harsh, they go into a community league, like they have in-house, right? But we're competing against that, so it just speaks well to the talent and the kids. And it was awesome, it was fun to, to see these kids grow and to develop and learn. And, you know, we played 35 games on the course since November. Yep, November, I think the Chaska Classic is, I think, the first week in November, maybe in the, it's in December. And just to see that, kind of that dedication and parents, and lots of good stuff happening. So just a shout out to the Chaska fourth grade, four C boys team, and congratulations, they're runner-up of the state tournament.
Cool. Congrats. Congratulations.
That it?
It is it.
Thank you. Elise?
One other construction open house you should be aware of. It's just for businesses, though, it's Wednesday morning, and it'll be talking about the, the PV Road Roundabout at 41. And again, businesses only, but important for their function, so just mention that.
So all of those businesses then are notified, so there's, nobody's going to come and tell us they didn't know about it?
Right, they've been out, they mailed a postcard, they've been doing door-to-door. I'm trying to think, they were doing individual follow-up phone calls and emails as well.
Is that the developer then?
That is the consultant that's been hired to help with this project.
Who do they have?
This, HDR, HDR is the consultant working on it, so.
You know, so that's for the PV Road, not the Pondview Development, right?
Right, this is the, the roundabout that's needed for the. Right. This is the, the roundabout that's needed for the Costco.
Well, the Pondview thing, that'll be part of the 41 project.
Right, because we're talking about the overlay. So, but I just wasn't sure if they were, if that was, if they were like intermingled.
Yeah, that's the evening meeting. So I think there's some confusion about who's hosting the morning meeting and who's hosting the evening meeting. And they're being hosted by different folks. But city staff will be there. Morning meeting's at Hazel Team.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you. Mike?
I'll report.
I'll report. How about you out there? Anything? Get me home?
Good. I asked my one question.
Matt?
Yeah. Just note that we have our Employee Years of Service Appreciation Breakfast tomorrow morning at 7:30. We did post it, so if anybody wants to come, feel free to come.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, thanks. I just want to give a shout out. Girls basketball, one loss again, fourth straight year they've won the conference championship. I don't even know, I haven't gone, so I don't know if they've had a section game already. I think they may-
They play Saturday, no, Friday, section championship's Friday at the high school. I think it's a seven o'clock tip.
Also, that's a section-
Against Eden Prairie. Be a section final championship.
Okay.
Yeah, they, Beaconia and Minnetoka.
Okay, I saw something about Minnetoka, and I didn't know when that was. It didn't have a date.
Yep, against Eden Prairie. So it's, and it'll be a good, I mean, it'll be a good game. It's the top two seeds. Chasko's the top seed, and Prairie was seeded, too.
Well, it'll be a battle then.
Yeah.
It'll be a battle. Well, that's pretty cool. Costco, we talked about employee recognition, talked about, I just want to give a quick shout out Public Works. I know they've been super crazy busy the last three weeks, month, and doing a phenomenal job. I, I got a very nice email from a gentleman out on Bavaria Road talking about how great a job that they've been doing, about taking care of the roads and, and keeping them open. And he travels around a lot, and he says it's nowhere near what it is in other places. So that's always good and encouraging to hear. So, but a shout out to our Public Works crew. And this, yesterday's snow was a, our last night's snow was some pretty heavy yuck. So not fun to push that stuff around either, for those guys. So.
I just got something tonight saying that we're in an 80% chance of being over six inches for Thursday.
Yeah.
So, wonderful.
It showed like 7.2 or something, but it's going to go back.
Now, we have to be hopeful of a nice, slow melt.
Yeah. I asked that question last week when you were gone.
Oh, okay.
Ground's not frozen.
A lot of us get-
Deficient of water already in it, so. But if it keeps-
And the thing is, but the thing is, I don't think we have snow to the west. We have to worry more about the west.
Yeah.
To fill up the basins. And I think most of it's like locally here. And we have more here than we do in some of the out states.
That's true.
I mean, I came up from the south, and we really didn't have any deep snow, though. I got to Chaska. The rest of, a lot of the fields were pretty open to the south, and some places had it, but it was-
Just Chaska.
It was spotty.
Charlie Brown with the cloud over his head.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
You could get a Carl Charlie Brown Christmas tree, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, upcoming meetings, March 20th, and then we go into April, and April 3rd and 17th. And obviously with all the construction updates, those meetings are going to get busier and busier and busier. So, love to keep going. And we have our department retreat is next Tuesday, Wednesday. And talk about our future, where we're going, and what's, what's on the horizon for next. So, so that's always, are we have two full days, not a day and a half?
So we talked to Irina on Friday, and she's suggesting going nine to four. So we're going to do nine to four each day. If we get out early on the second day, we get out early. I just don't want to rush it. Like, sometimes we'll, we'll, like, be at noon and feel like we're rushing it. I'd, I'd rather get out early.
Yeah, right. Okay. Because I thought that that's, I was going to ask you that. I thought that that's different than normal. Usually it's a day and a half.
Yeah. But we'll, we'll get out the, the details. But it is, it is going to be nine to four, not, I think we had said 8:30 to-
4:30.
4:30 before.
Nine to four. All right. Uh, I just, I think that's all I got. Anyone else? Last call. Motion to adjourn?
Just removed.
Motion by Councilmember Hetfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. See you in a couple of weeks. Thanks, everyone. Have a good-